Good evening. I will now call the meeting of the Board of Education to order at 6:30 PM. The secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present. Please respond by staying here.
Dr. Barth Fagan.
Here.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Groupie.
Here.
Mr. Kempton.
Here.
Mrs. Moon.
Here.
Ms. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Schrader is here.
Thank you. If you will now stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is recognitions and presentations and just the reminder that anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item they want to address is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. And as you approach the podium, please provide your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satin, and he will share those with us at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks will be limited to three minutes and one appearance. Questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. Sedalia School District Foundation. I don't see anybody, okay. NEA.
Good evening. On behalf of Sedalia NEA, I would like to express our sincere appreciation for the increase in base salary and the steps on the pay scale for the upcoming school year. We are also grateful for the district's continued full coverage of employee health insurance. In a time of economic uncertainty, we recognize and applaud the district's thoughtful budgeting and your commitment to prioritizing teachers and staff. We are also pleased Central Office considered feedback from an SNEA member and revised DESI's Culture and Climate Survey to better meet the needs of our district. The updated questions were well crafted, and we look forward to reviewing the results. As we wrap up the school year, with 26 more days and counting, I think, Sedalia NEA will be launching a membership drive. Information will be sent to Mr. Satin soon to share with all staff, including details on how to join NEA. New members who join now receive free membership until September and will also be entered into a raffle to win one of four $25 M's on gift cards. And since feedback from our membership is very important to our organization and guides our efforts, all current members who complete the Sedalia NEA feedback form by May 15th will also be entered into the raffle for one of the $25 M's on gift cards. Thank you for your continued support of Sedalia Educators. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
SCEA? No. And next is Mr. Norton with the Student Advocacy Competency-Based Education.
So with me tonight, I have four students. I have two juniors and two seniors. I have Bridger Belknap and Charlotte Fisher are juniors, and Jamison Severa and Morgan Withers, two seniors. So when we started on our Smith Cotton CBE journey, two of these students, our two seniors, used the CBE journey as a civics engagement project where they went on a mission to talk to staff members, to students, and to research the topic of competency-based education. And I think their journey took them on a path that hasn't ended yet. It was a simple junior project, and they are continuing that. So they added on two more students, and this is now a CAPS project that these four students are working on. As they are researching, these four students also went with us to Colorado where they were able to talk to the guru, Dr. Marzano himself, and now they would like to present to the board. So you all have a flyer on your table. They met with me last Thursday, and I think they were looking for a little bit of guidance of what they should present about, what they should talk about. And I looked at them, I said, "I'm not going to tell you one thing, this is on you. Only thing I'm going to tell you is 10 minutes." So they've got a lot to talk about, and their time hasn't started yet. So I would like to introduce Ms. Morgan Withers. She is going to take them down the path.
Good afternoon, everybody. I first want to say thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to be here. We're going to try to keep it under 10 minutes, I don't know how well that goes. So I'm a senior at Smith Cotton, as Mr. Norton said. This project started in my junior year, I think November of 2023. It was our US government civic engagement project where we had to find a problem and find steps to solve it. The problem that we had found was that we felt Missouri high schools were not adequately preparing students for the workforce and higher education, and that was something that was really important to us. And so we wanted to research all the ways to change it and make it better. We interviewed 15 teachers within our district. We interviewed industry professionals as well as college professionals. And this research took us down like such a windy and different path. We interviewed with Mr. Norton and Ms. McKinney, and they kind of showed us the success-ready student network and the steps that we're currently taking, such as our PLP courses. And then it continued on this year, which I'll let Jamison talk a little bit more about.
I am Jamison, and I know when you hear what we're doing, the competency-based education and scales, those buzzwords, I know when I heard them, I was thinking, what, kids are going to sit in a big old room, they're going to sit on their computers, and it's going to suck. And I was pleasantly surprised, especially with our trip to Colorado. In Colorado, we toured Westminster High School, a high school that has both scales and competency-based education and full effect. And looking at those classrooms, from the outside, you cannot tell a difference. It looked exactly like what we were doing here. But when you walked up and you started talking to those students, you started talking to the teachers, you really realized what they were doing and how it was special. How they grouped their kids. All of those kids that were in that classroom were at a very similar level. They were able to work with each other because they're, I mean, so close in level in what they were doing. But it also made it easier on the teacher. The teacher now knew where students were at all the time. It was easier to manage the class because they didn't have such a wide, wide array of skill levels. It made it easier for the teacher to talk to the students, get better feedback. And ultimately, I think that led to more love of education out of those students. When you walked through that high school, I mean, those students wanted to be there. I think they're having more fun. They were actually being able to learn because they're at a level that suits them. But then they were able to lead their own learning, which ultimately led to more engagement, and they weren't just being passed through these classes. The next thing we did in Colorado was we went and looked at their CTE program. It's a program very similar to what we have here, known as CAPS, in the way that it is pushing towards technical skills as well as professional knowledge. You're getting more experience out of it. But it's also very similar in the way that it is project-led education. They are doing projects to learn. And I just thought that was really cool to see in Colorado, a school that, school district that we're looking up to, and we're trying to copy or mimic, if you will, is already doing things, we're doing things very similar to them. That was very cool to see. On our final day there, we met with the Marzano Academy. And with medium with them, it was cool to see the workshop that they hosted for the teachers, just to see what happens in the backend, what goes into things as simple as a seating chart. It was really, really unique. Put a new perspective, I know, especially on me, but I bet on them as well. The final day, or the final half of that day, we met with Dr. Marzano, the, you know, the creator of CBE and scales. We did a podcast with them. We talked for a long time, but the biggest thing that he said was, "We need to speak our own language." Education is not perfect for everybody. Education for one person is very different from what it looks like for another person. So here in Sedalia, we have to figure out what works for our community, our students, and we just have to stick with it, do our own thing. We can try to copy scales, we can try to copy competency-based education, but ultimately, we have to put our own twist on it. We have to do things our way, what works for us. Coming back, we had a large array of knowledge that we wanted to share. So we hosted a panel. We invited the community, educators, parents. We sat down and talked about CBE and scales. We talked about what we learned, we talked about a lot of the growing questions, and then, of course, we opened it up to the community to ask us questions, really to help show what we're doing, but also get rid of a lot of the stigma that comes with it. Bridger will talk about a little bit what's been happening in the school district, or I guess in the high school, and what's happening in classrooms.
My name is Bridger Belknap, and this year, we've already started implementing CBE across the high school through our CAPS program, our PLP, Personalized Learning Pathway for our math students, and various other classrooms and teachers across the high school. Initially, there was a lot of pushback from students, myself included, because we were switching from this old system, what we've done for years, to this brand-new system. But I've realized that, and a lot of other students have, that this system isn't much different from before. It focuses on the students' learning, and I think if you ask a lot of students who are in these classes, they'll say the same thing. And even in these early stages, we've seen a ton of benefits. A really good example of this is our PLP pathway program. And in this, there's been students who have been kind of held back by the current system, who were all the way down to a second-grade education level. And through this, they've been able to get the education that they need to help bring them back up. We've also had students on the other end who have just blown the roof off. They're flying through these courses, sophomores at a senior level. And I think that really shows the potential in the, the potential of this program, CBE, even in the early stages. And Charlotte is going to talk a little bit more on the future of CBE.
I'm Charlotte, and as Bridger said, we've seen a lot of success with PLP and the CAPS programs. The kids that are in those programs are absolutely loving the new personalized education that they've been able to get. It feels less like you're being trapped in a classroom. Ideally, in the future, we would like to have every classroom be competency-based. Every kid is getting this personalized education. They're not just being forced through the step-by-step education that they've had their entire childhood. It's not just because you're in 11th grade, because you're 16, you have to take this math class, or you have to be at this level. You're working at your own pace, and you're able to work ahead or need to get caught up if you need to. This is going to help our kids feel a lot more prepared when they leave this building. A lot of our students would probably come back and sadly say that they didn't know what they wanted to do when they got out of high school. A word that you'll hear throw around a lot is student advocacy. And this is students being a part of their own education. These kids are no longer just watching their education go by from the sidelines, being forced through this rigid system. They're taking part in their learning, they're controlling how they're able to prove that they've actually learned something and prove that they deserve the grade that they've gotten. We want kids to be able to walk out of here and say that they can confidently live without our assistance. We want them to have somewhat an idea of what they want to do. They were able to explore their passions because they were able to move things, move through classes as they wanted to. We want kids to say that Smith Cotton helps them graduate. I'm going to pass it back to Morgan Withers to close us off.
I'm not really sure on the time here, but hopefully it's under 10 minutes. Thank you, guys, so much for listening to us talk. Jamison and I, I know this being our senior year, we're really excited that we're getting to pass this project on to Bridger and Charlotte, and then we're excited to see who they pass it on to. We want students to be involved in their education at every step of the way. We believe that there should always be a consistent state of reevaluation on education, and involving all stakeholders in that is really important. So thank you, guys, so much for listening to us talk.
And I think one, one piece of tying CAPS, tying competency-based, tying the scale work that we're working on, these students, they know what they're being evaluated on. So tonight, they got up, and they didn't have a lot of guidance from me, but they knew they could go back to where they're at on whatever scale this tied back to for any of their CAPS teachers. Correct?
Yeah.
And they could look at those levels and go, "Okay, I'm at a 2.5 here, I know I need to hit this." So now, those educators can take that, they can take this presentation, review the board YouTube channel tonight and watch it, and they can score these for students on their scale and where they're at. And those students will be able to take that immediate feedback, not just a score, and go and grow from it. And I would, I would have to give you a 4.0 tonight, that's just, that's where I would go. So just for the future, Smith Cotton, next year, we will be phasing in pieces of CBE. The teachers will be, every teacher will be phasing in some form or fashion of CBE in their classroom. That might be just be posting the scales in their classroom, they might be introducing the scales, but the phasing will look different throughout. The 26, 27 school year, we will be calibrating, we will be looking at how that works within the classroom. And then 27, 28, we will be implementing a full CBE program at Smith Cotton. And as they, they spoke, I mean, I felt like I could have given them the script, and they were spot on. We want this to fit for Smith Cotton, so what it looks like will be different than Westminster, will be different than what Dr. Marzano probably has in his whole white picture, but it will work for Smith Cotton, it'll work for Sedalia 200, it'll work for Sedalia. So does anybody have any questions for these four students? Was there any effort to explore how CBE can affect lower grades, junior high, middle school, elementary? I know we're, I know we're implementing slowly some of the robotics programs into those schools. Is that, are we testing out the?
So I think actually whenever we were talking with Marzano Academies, CBE works best in the lower-grade levels. I'm not 100% on this, but yeah, they're all nodding their head. It, it works best for those lower-grade levels. I mean, whenever you have kids in elementary, they come home with a report card, and it's like, "Oh, your kid's proficient, satisfactory, whatever." So I mean, they're already having those skills kind of, I don't know. I don't know a whole lot on that. We were primarily focused on high school because that's the, the step right before college and the most important in my eyes.
Are there any other questions from the board? I did attend the Community Engagement Forum, and it was so informative, and I appreciated the educators that were here presenting. But I think the fact that it was student-led that evening was so impressive, and I learned more about it that night. It's a learning process for us as well. So I appreciate you all taking the time and being here to keep sharing with us because it's greatly appreciated.
I especially, I especially appreciate that none of you will actually see the thing, the program fully implemented, but you're willing to put your time in to get it done. That's perhaps a little unusual, thank you for doing that.
Thank you again.
Thank you. One more thing, watch Team Scream in Houston this weekend, we're competing at the world championship. All of us are on Team Scream, so.
Oh, go, go Team Scream! And next is Dr. Fraley with a recognition for Mr. Foster.
Mr. Foster, come on down. Well, I'd like to officially and publicly recognize Mr. Brian Foster as the Smith Cotton Junior High School Assistant Principal slash Activities Director, being named the MI AAA Thaddeus Hamilton Middle School Athletic Director of the Year for the entire state of Missouri. Well deserved.
Very much. Thank you.
Do you have a seat?
No. I proudly just represent our district, we're doing great things. We got great coaches, great coaching staff, great admin team. I love my job, so that's a plus. So I'm just happy to represent all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Coach Foster, if you don't mind if I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please find a way, you have an infectious personality. Please find a way to let it spread as far and wide as you can through our district. There's very few kids that come through, including my own, that don't have a memory that's really positive from you. And I know there's a lot of really talented folks in our district, but you're one that I followed and admired for a long time. Please don't stop spreading the good stuff, okay? Thank you.
Thank you again. I will now ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Consent agenda items 4.1 to 4.9. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda item 4.10, payment of bills with Mr. Kempton abstaining. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is decisions of unfinished business. Mr. Curry, the health insurance renewal.
I'm going to try and provide a quick recap of everything that's transpired leading up to tonight and what ultimately is going to be the recommendation for our renewal leading into 25, 26. So if you recall from our meeting two weeks ago, we had representatives from our brokerage firm of Holmes Murphy here to present the findings of our market analysis that yielded two options for us moving forward into next year. One of those options would be a renewal with our incumbent current provider of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City. And the second was a self-funded unbundled option that would include a medical plan from UMR of network coverage. It would include cost, reinsurance costs through Symetra and a pharmacy benefit manager through Smith RX. If you remember, and those of you that have been on the board for a while now, as we've delved into this self-funded option for several years, we've always heard that carving out the pharmacy would provide us opportunities for savings. Currently, with our bundled plan through Blue Cross, our renewal was set, finally set, at 8.7%, which equates to about $633,000 and some change. The unbundled plan, including UMR, Symetra, and Smith RX, would be a 3% above current funding raise increase and would potentially allow us some savings through prescription RX credits that may attune for about a savings of $330,000 and some change. So the issue, though, and the concern with moving to a fully self-funded plan, while there is potential for savings, and the renewal would be at a lower rate, our overall liability risk that the district would take on would be approximately $2.1 million above what our current max liability is with the bundled plan option through Blue Cross. So the self-bundled platform is a very much risk-reward option that I just don't see it right now with the way our plan is running, that that risk of $2.1 million of potential max exposure outweighs the reward of moving in that direction. Potentially, as an option in the future, it is still there. This is the first time that the, the real market analysis was done that showed us what a plan like that would generate for us. So that option is, again, will still be there in the future. The findings from that is what Holmes Murphy took back to Blue Cross and said, you know, "This is real savings that, that this, our client could see" by carving out that pharmacy benefit manager. And that's what ultimately led to Blue Cross reducing that number from 11% down to 8.7%. So that's what we know, and that's what's led to the recommendation that I have for you tonight. And that's where I would direct you now, is to look at the attachment that is in your packet. This shows our plan comparison of current plans as well as the adjustments needed for those plans to make us having 100% board-paid benefits feasible. So you recall, I mentioned that 8.7% equated to about $633,000 and some change. The only way that number in that figure changes or gets adjusted is by adjusting our plan components, and those Tier 1 and Tier 2 plan components. So what you see, and I'll, I'll start by directing you, the orange columns are our current plan options that we have, and the orange-headed columns, the blue header columns, are plans for, proposed plans for next year with those changes involved. As you look, if you look at the base PPO plan, that plan currently was a $1,500 deductible. And then you'll see the change, the recommended change for next year would be to move that deductible to 1,750. If you work your way down the PPO base column of current, our $1,500 deductible plan, you'll see how those out-of-pocket maxes, those employee family numbers, and you see all of those changes for next year in the column to the right of it. But as you work your way down and you get down to employee contributions, you'll see that that is zeroed out, so there is no cost to the employee. So that's a base plan that is 100% board-paid. So you'll see what currently that value of that base plan is, that's under the district subsidy. So currently, what the districts, what we bet, or what we account for is $810.77. So that's what we budget for, for every member, every month, is $810.77. So you'll see what those changes and how we can try and keep the overall costs of our plan somewhat controlled are by making those changes to the deductibles, to the out-of-pocket expenses, to the co-pays. What we did not allow them to do were to change the RX or the prescription costs. We have a lot of our, we have a lot of our staff and a lot of our members that have a lot of prescription costs. We know that RX generates a big portion of what our plan, of the cost of our plan. So we did not want to change those. Now, of course, each plan is different, and each member is different in how they select their plan that best fits them. So we do have that base option that is, again, 0% or $0 contributed by the employee. Now, you'll also see that there is one buy-up plan that is being recommended to not be put in place for next year. That buy-up plan fiscally was not a good offering for the district. So even though there is a small number, you'll see percentages there. There's 6% of our members that are part of that plan, which I think it counted for like 48 employees or 48 members that are in that option. There is still another option, PPO option, that is offered, that is a buy-up option that is very similar. But again, you can see the, the changes to those deductibles, those out-of-pocket expenses in each of those plans and how that, how that factors in. What we have found in the analysis of our plan offering by our broker from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City is basically that what we see, and this, a lot of this detail is in the memo with some technical wording and some additional definitions and stuff that I don't want to try and get into and explain. But what we found, and what they have found, is that with our high, our high-deductible health plans, those HSA plans that are the last two plan offerings to the right in the table that you see, what they've seen is that when those plans were first offered to the district in 2010, those high-deductible health plans were offered to us at a very low value and that they didn't expect those plans at that time to cover as much that they do. What they have found over the last 15 years is that these plans do cover. And what has happened is the gap that was created when these were first offered to us, the gap in value has increased year over year as we've had these plans in place and offered for the last 15 years. So what we have recommended is adjusting the value of those plans so that it is more equitable for all plans across what the district offers to our members. So essentially, if you'll look then at, look at the, the Blue Saver $3,300 plan. You'll see currently what that value was presented at by Blue Cross was $714. We have to adjust that value so that it is, again, more equitable across the plan. So that value- So that value for next year would be $782. But you also see that the difference in the new established rate of our base PPO is $852. So what we're, what we will budget for every staff member per month, per employee, is $852 a month next year. So that's, again, an increase from 810.77. So the difference in our health savings account plans, you'll see at 782.53 next year, the district subsidizes that difference from 782.53 up to 852. So we will subsidize the health savings accounts at $69.47 for that plan for our members. So again, it's a zero-cost increase for our members, and we have three of those options. The base PPO plan is to be a zero cost, and both high deductible health plans, those health savings account, would be zero, $0 contributions by our members. That is one of the things that we have tried to stress to our broker as being a point of emphasis for the district. We, and I know, I think it's the board's consensus as well, we appreciate being able to tell our staff members and those people that we're trying to recruit to come and work here that we do offer 100% board-paid benefits. Again, it becomes difficult because the, like I said, the only way that we can adjust that number from $633,000 and change is by adjusting the plan changes that you see in front of you. So each of these changes that get made equate to lowering those percentages to the district. Of course, we all know that that means that those changes come at the expense of our members as well, and those changes, again, are reflected here. And each of these options will be presented to them during our open enrollment so that they can select the plan that best works for them in the situation that they're in. So ultimately, again, this as presented with these changes, the initial renewal rate was 8.7%. These changes that are presented here in front of you tonight lower that rate down to 5.1%, which still equates to $354,266 above what we currently budget. So we currently budget just under $7.3 million. So you'll see how that will, you know, Dr. Fraley had already budgeted worst-case scenario at 8.7, so that money is there. But again, this cost-plus platform can be beneficial. We've seen it be beneficial for the district in the past. This last, end of last year, the numbers were not running very favorably for us, and that's why we saw, again, this increase that started at 11% and ultimately was, was brought down to 8.7. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to try and help answer them. Again, I put more information within the memo for everyone to reference, but if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to try and answer.
Does anybody have any questions?
It's complicated. This whole insurance industry is, as crazy as I've seen it in the 32 years I've been in it.
Okay.
And thank you for trying to make heads or tails of it because it is very difficult.
It is, and I'm not an insurance agent or broker, and so it's definitely more difficult for me.
Yeah.
I would say that, so that, that value of 852, that does include everything. So that's administrative fees, that's stop-loss fees per member per month. So that is an all-in fee per, per member or per employee. And so the difference there would, again, be how, how would we budget moving to a self-funded platform? How would we budget that additional $2.1 million of exposure, liability exposure, per member per month would show us a higher rate than what we currently would see at 852. So that's why, again, this recommendation is to approve the renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield with these plan changes in front of you.
Do I hear a motion to approve employee health insurance plans and their pricings as of July 1st, 2025, which includes modifications to Tier 1 and Tier 2 health plan options, a partial adjustment to the aggregate factors for the HD, HP, and PPO plans representing 25% of the identified actual value difference, and corresponding adjustments to healthcare, health savings account contributions, an overall district healthcare cost increase of 5.1% or $354,266 as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you so much, Mr. Curry.
No problem.
Dr. Fraley, the 2025 series lease purchase funding options?
Yeah, last, our last meeting on the 31st of March, L.J. Hart, Courtney Wegman came in and introduced some options to the Board of Education at that time for another round of lease certificates of participation. In order to coincide with our current facilities plan, I am suggesting that we give L.J. Hart permission to go on to the market with the Schedule 7 that was presented. There was Schedule 5 through 8 presented, Schedule 7, for a total of $15 million in lease purchase certificates to help us continue with that long-range facilities plan and initiate more of those projects of remodeling, renovations, and et cetera.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. Mr. Curry, the request for additional speech-language pathologist, or Mr. Sherman?
Again, we're, we're coming to you this month for asking for an SLP speech-language pathologist position for the 25, 26 school year.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sherman?
Is the funding through DESI already in place?
Yes, the funding's in place. If, for some reason, our numbers were to decrease, it would be prorated, so we wouldn't be on the hook for, for the whole amount.
No, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of the current, you know, the, the current problems we have with a Secretary of Education who thinks that AI is A1 steak sauce and things like that. I just want to make sure the funding is there.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'll make that motion.
Are there any other questions? Motion has been made by Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Ms. Gilmore, or Ms. Brownfield?
I know we look a lot alike. I'm filling in for Ms. Gilmore tonight. I know she brought the formative assessment program change to you at the last board meeting. Did you have any additional questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
We just heard that, that presentation on, on CBE. How will this help us get there?
So this will continue to progress monitor our students based on their standards. It'll give us standards-level data, which supports CBE and scales moving forward. Which we've had in the past, we've always had standards-level data. This just kind of, this is a better process and system for elementary and what they do at the coaching level and in their data meetings. So it will just kind of be married with the other data points and the proficiency scales to look at multiple components of data, to see where the true learning is for those students and their progression.
Is this going to give more real-time assessment of our kiddos in K5?
It will, it will give immediate feedback for the assessment of the kids in K5. Yes.
What is the work, paperwork, busy work? Is that going to increase under this?
Is it going to increase what? I'm sorry.
Will it, will this increase the amount of time that our teachers spend working on all this?
This is basically, we're switching out the Mastery Connect program, so it's, it's basically a null value. It's not changing the workload for the teachers at this point.
Okay, all right.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. This may be a foolish question, but have you polled the elementary school principals, and do you feel like they are in support of this?
I can't speak directly to that because that's Ms. Gilmore, but I think they would tell you they've had in their administrative meetings and their coaches' meetings, they've discussed this at length, and they are in support, to my understanding. They can really be there shaking their heads at me, so.
We assume that at times? I just wanted to make sure. I saw some nodding heads, and I just...
Yeah, typically, the process is with a change like this, we take that to our administrative teams and our, we have our admin meetings, and we have our admin and coach meetings, where our coaches, instructional coaches are involved as well. And so that's a team decision.
Thank you for the clarification.
If there are no other questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve a three-year formative contract for grades K through 5 totaling $50,385 and a $4,500 in-person training session for K5 staff at the beginning of the 25, 26 school year as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. And you have the next one.
I, I do. So just bringing back to you the idea of taking one of our current positions that we already have on the books for our EL staff and changing that role for the next school year as an EL instructional coach to try and help support those teachers directly in the classroom as they're working with the EL students. The proposal is, is to try this for a year and get feedback from, from everyone involved, from our administrators and our, our staff, and look at our data and see the impact potentially.
Are there any questions for Ms. Brownfield?
Is this being, basically being paid for in-house?
Correct.
Okay, by converting it from a teacher to...
Correct. We're not adding a position.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the transition of an existing EL teaching position into an EL instructional coach role as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. And next on our agenda is Dr. Fraley, the election results.
Yes, I'm going to, we're going to need a motion to approve the Board of Directors as presented for the election results that happened on April 8th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If there are any, if there are no objections, then approve April 8th, 2025 election results for the Board of Education directors. Will stand as approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You asked for, you asked for discussion. If there's no discussion, you didn't ask if there were any objections.
Yeah, do we have a chance? Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we all had a chance to speak.
Are there any objections to the election results?
Nope.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. It is approved.
Thank you, Dr. Fraley. And now I will ask for a motion to adjourn to, this is my favorite term, sinai dai?
Dai.
Did I do good? Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? And a roll call vote?
Dr. Bart Fagan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kimpton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader votes aye.
Welcome. This portion of the meeting of the Board of Education of the Sudeia School District 200 is called to order for the reorganization by the superintendent. Ms. Hammerly will call the roll.
Dr. Care Bart Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Here.
Mr. Kimpton?
Here.
Ms. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Schrader?
Here.
We call the meeting to order at 7:15 PM, and a quorum is present. At this point in time, Ms. Hammerly will administer the oath of office to the board candidates that were re-elected.
We can do it here. This is the part where we can test her. We do it together. Okay, that's fine. So I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I am at least 24 years of age...
That I am at least 24 years of age...
...that I am a citizen of the United States...
That I am a citizen of the United States...
...and a resident of the tax payer...
And a resident tax payer...
...of the Sudeia School District 200...
Of the Sudeia School District 200...
...in Pettis County...
In Pettis County...
...in the state of Missouri...
In the state of Missouri...
...and that I will support the constitutions...
And that I will support the constitutions...
...of the United States...
Of the United States...
...and of the state of Missouri...
And of the state of Missouri...
...and that I will abide...
And that I will abide...
...by and uphold...
By and uphold...
...the Sudeia School District 200...
The Sudeia School District 200...
...board member code of ethics...
Board member code of ethics...
...and will faithfully...
And will faithfully...
...demean myself in office...
Demean myself in office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the first election this evening will be for the office of President of the Board. At this time, I will take nominations for President.
I would like to nominate Diana Nichols as President.
Diana Nichols nominated as President.
Move, nomination cease, and Diana Nichols be appointed, be elected by acclamation.
Any other nominations? I hear no further nominations. Nominations are closed. We now proceed to the election. The candidate for President is Diana Nichols. This election will be conducted by a roll call. We will now vote on the person nominated who is Diana Nichols. The secretary will call the roll, and if you're in favor of electing Diana Nichols, please respond with yes. If you do not wish to elect Diana Nichols, please respond no. You may also abstain. Secretary will now call the roll.
Dr. Care Bart Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Groupie?
Yes.
Mr. Kimpton?
Yes.
Ms. Moon?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Schrader?
Yes.
The results of the vote are follows. There were seven votes in favor of Diana Nichols and zero votes opposed. There were zero abstentions. Diana Nichols has received the majority of the votes cast and is declared elected President for Board of Education. I will now relinquish the chair to the newly elected President, Diana Nichols.
Thank you. And now we move on to Vice President election for the Vice President role. I will now accept nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Sam Kimpton.
I have a nomination for Sam Kimpton. Are there any others?
Move, nomination cease, and Mr. Kimpton be elected by acclamation.
We will now proceed to the election. The candidate for Vice President is Sam Kimpton. The election will be conducted by a roll call. We will now vote on the person nominated who is Sam Kimpton, and the secretary will call the roll. If you are in favor of electing Sam Kimpton, please respond yes. If you do not wish to elect Sam Kimpton, please respond no, and you may also abstain.
Dr. Care Bart Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Groupie?
Yes.
Mr. Kimpton?
Abstain.
Ms. Moon?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Schrader?
Yes.
And there were six votes in favor of, zero... And there were six votes in favor of, zero votes opposed, and one abstentions. Sam Kimpton has received a majority of the votes cast and is declared elected vice president. The next election will be for the Office of Treasurer of the Board. I now ask for nominations.
Nominate Pam Moon.
Are there any others?
Move, nomination cease, and Pam Moon be elected by acclamation.
Okay, we will now proceed to the election. The candidate for treasurer is Pam Moon, and we will now vote on the person who nomi, is, who was nominated, which is Pam Moon. The secretary will call the roll, and if you are in favor of electing Pam, please respond yes. If you do not wish to elect Pam, please respond no, and you may also abstain.
Dr. Carebarth Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Groupie?
Yes.
Mr. Kimpton?
Yes.
Ms. Moon?
Abstain.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Schrader?
Yes.
Thank you. There were six votes in favor of Pam Moon and zero votes opposed, and there were one abstentions. Pam Moon has received a majority of the votes cast and is declared elected. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next position for this evening to be elected is secretary of the board. I now ask for nominations for secretary.
Nominate Barbara Schrader.
Are there any other nominations?
Move, nomination cease, and Barbara Schrader be elected by acclamation.
We will now proceed to the election. The candidate for secretary is Barbara Schrader. The election will be conducted by roll call, and the secretary will call the roll. If you are in favor of electing Barbara Schrader, please respond yes. If you do not wish to elect Barbara, please respond no. You may also abstain.
Dr. Carebarth Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Groupie?
Yes.
Mr. Kimpton?
Yes.
Ms. Moon?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Schrader?
There were six votes in favor of Barbara Schrader and zero votes opposed, and there was one abstentions. Barbara Schrader has received a majority of the votes and is declared elected secretary. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we move on to the MSBA delegate election. Just as a reminder, the MSBA delegate is a school board member that has been appointed uh, by the school board to serve as a liaison with MSBA. And I will now ask for nominations for MSBA delegate.
Nominate Brad Groupie as MSBA delegate.
Mr. Groupie has been nominated. Are there any others?
Move, nomination cease, and Mr. Groupie be elected by acclamation.
We will now proceed to the election. The candidate for MSBA delegate is Brad Groupie. And the election will now be conducted by roll call. The secretary will call the roll, and if you are in favor of electing Brad Groupie, please respond yes. If you do not wish to elect Brad Groupie, please respond no. You may also abstain.
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Groupie?
Abstain.
Mr. Kimpton?
Yes.
Mrs. Moon?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Schrader votes yes.
There are six votes in favor of Brad Groupie and zero votes opposed with one abstentions. Brad Groupie has received a majority of the votes cast and is declared elected MSBA delegate. Congratulations. And then we also need an MSBA alternate. I will open that for, up for nomination.
Nominate Scott Gardner.
Scott Gardner has been nominated as alternate delegate. Uh, are there any other nominations? If not, we will now proceed to the election. Uh, again, by roll call vote, the secretary will call the roll, and if you are in favor of electing Scott Gardner, please respond yes. If you wish, if you do not wish to elect Scott Gardner, please respond no, and you may also abstain.
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Groupie?
Yes.
Mr. Kimpton?
Yes.
Mrs. Moon?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Schrader votes yes.
And the results are seven votes in favor of Scott Gardner as alternate, alternate delegate, zero votes opposed, and there were no abstentions. Uh, Scott has received the majority of the votes and is declared elected MSBA alternate. Okay. Next on the agenda are two consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items ten point one to ten point two?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Okay, next is decision. Okay. Board meeting schedule for the school year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Um, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, you have before you, uh, proposed board meeting schedule for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And you see the, the dates selected pretty much mirror our schedule for this year. Of course, just, uh, the same Mondays, uh, on the same correlated months. I wonder if anybody have any questions about this? Of course, we can, as we've done in the past, when certain things come up, we meet and make adjustments as necessary.
Do I have a motion to approve the board meeting schedule for the school year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pyle, the district custodial supplies?
Yes, our Board of Education had the opportunity in our board packets to look through a bid analysis for our most recent bid process for district-wide custodial bids. This would be for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, these next few items that I'll talk about. We received bids from nine total different, uh, companies who were interested in bidding on the products to help service our schools. Uh, we'll point out that this year's total was six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars more than last year, as we know prices and things have gone up across the board in many things. But, uh, to point out just quickly, some of that was for outfitting, again, SMS, the, this, uh, south end again, where we had disposed of some of the older items and things down there, everything from trash cans to also looking at new dispensers for restrooms across the district and things. So that's where some of the extra costs come in. Thinking about all those things and in consideration of the nine bidders, it is my recommendation tonight to accept the bids as outlined in the summary that was in the packet. The cost to purchase all items for the next school year will be one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents, with five of those items being custodial preference and those, those related to trash can liners and different things that, that work well for our team.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the motion is approved. Thank you. And Mr. Pyle, the district copy paper?
Yes, this is another item that was, we just recent, uh, bid process for copy paper for the next school year. This is a area, a copy paper bid where we do help some of surrounding schools. They pay the exact amount that we pay, it just helps those schools and helps us with an overall price. We received bids from Clayton Paper, Quill Corporation, Contract Paper Group, Liberty Paper, Smith Paper, SPC Supply, and Veritiv Operating Company. So again, a competitive bid process. The low bid from Contract Paper Group come in at forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents, but they did reach out to the district on April tenth, uh, just last week to withdraw their bid. They explained that with the impending tariff situation, that this would impact their ability to honor that bid. So we looked back at the next closest bidder, and it was, uh, just, just very close. So I went ahead and made the recommendation tonight to move to Veritiv Operating Company with a bid of forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents for their number one grade paper, uh, for Board of Education consideration approval. I do want to point out that we went with Veritiv last year. They were the low bid, and, and overall, we were pleased with their, with what they provided.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the bid from Veritiv Operating Company for the district and surrounding area copy paper as detailed in the attached bid analysis for a total cost of forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents, which includes delivery to both specified locations as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All not in favor say nay. And the motion carries. And district HVAC filters, Mr. Pyle?
Yes, this is another one for the next school year. We're, we're making sure we're equipped for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So, uh, the bid analysis was included in our board packet on a recent process that we went through looking at bids from Crescent Parts and Equipment, Midwest Supply, IBT and KC Air Filter, which was a new bidder this year. Uh, they come and actually opened bids with us, looked at those with us, and complimented the local bidders who, who keep this very competitive. Uh, actually, this was a, uh, savings this year as compared to the year before by a small amount. It's usually very competitive between IBT and Crescent. My recommendation tonight is to accept the bid from IBT out of Soudaya with a low bid of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents for the next school year.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle?
This isn't HEPA filters. Our, our current, our current, uh, units can't handle a HEPA load, can they?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
These are the highest grade that they will handle loads.
Okay, all right. So I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gardner. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the motion carries. And Mr. Pyle, the concrete project at Smith Cotton High School?
Yes, uh, the district reviewed the need to move forward with adding concrete, uh, to the east bus lane at Smith Cotton High School during a review of our long-term facilities plan. I bring that up because we had talked about that the last couple of months. That was just one of those projects listed. So, uh, we did seek out bids, uh, they were advertised as the opportunities and, and, uh, in hopes to get bidders, and we did have a bid opening on April second, twenty twenty-five. Within that, the scope of work included removing the asphalt on the east bus lane, and there were three other locations in the parking lot here at Smith Cotton High School where damage was, has occurred through time and needed attention. So we were going to remove the asphalt, these bidders were, and then put concrete back to improve that travel area. Did have three bids. I want to just quickly go through those bid, um, summary for anybody that may be listening and our board again. ABC Exteriors, Arbuzz Construction LLC of Soudaya, Missouri provided a bid of three hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for this work. McCollister Construction LLC of Soudaya provided a bid of two hundred and forty thousand for this work. Septagon Construction LLC of Soudaya provided a bid of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars for this work. Uh, within that, to make you aware of that, we did notice as we were looking very closely on the bid opening day, that two of the contractors that bid these opportunities indicated a difference in the overall square footage to complete the project. So with that discrepancy tonight, uh, we bring that to the board to, to ask for a rejection of all bids at this time. I would like to provide a second opportunity for the contractors on this project. We may bring back some other items to talk about for concrete in the future, but for this specific project, we would just reach back out to those three, um, make sure they're, again, on the same page with that scope and share our square footage for them to then follow.
If we reject the bids tonight, will we, will we still be able to get the concrete poured and then at maximum compression before the school year starts?
Yes, that is the goal, and, and all three of these have that in their schedule to do if they would be awarded.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to reject all bids received for Smith Cotton High School East Bus Lane Concrete Project.
Is it your intent to reach back out to them pretty immediately?
Yes.
I just noticed that McCollister had the, the low bid according to square footage. So even if it does increase, it's still going to cost less than at least Septagon, and I didn't know how those rates were going to go up if we waited too long, so.
Yes. Well, we plan to actually, uh, finalize our scope tomorrow now that the board has rejected that, um, and reach right back out to all three of them and see what we can do to bring that back to the next board meeting for approval, consideration and approval at that time.
Yeah, we, we plan to reevaluate the scope of that, that bid. We've also received some core samples of our parking lot, uh, which may affect some of that work as well. Uh, the, there is four inches, and, and all the pavement out here is original folks. It's not been resurfaced, and it's been, that was two thousand and nine we opened up, uh, so it's been fifteen years plus. So there's four inches asphalt out front. Over south by the gymnasium, the stadium, they only put down two and a half inches. Uh, so that is a very thin layer of asphalt over there. So we may need to expand some of, some of this. In addition to just the, the board's, uh, knowledge, our inter-agency agreement with the city of Soudaya, that's not going to work out this year because, uh, the city is going to just be too busy with their own projects to be able to, to, to help, uh, help us out, no fault of theirs, obviously. Uh, and that's good news for us as patrons of the city to get, uh, road improvements, street improvements around town. Uh, so we, we'll also, in addition to this, be going out for a, a pavement bid as well, which of course is, is, paving companies are different than concrete companies, obviously.
Any other questions? Mr. Gardner made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. And a donation, Mr. Sherman, received from the Women's Service League?
The Women's Service League has generously donated four thousand, five hundred dollars to the Loftus, um, for, uh, items used in our physical therapy and occupational therapy programs.
Very nice donation. That was nice. Are there any questions for Mr. Sherman? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve a four thousand, five hundred dollar donation from the Women's Service League to the Loftus Early Childhood Center for the purchase of equipment, supporting the physical therapy and occupational therapy programs, including tricycles, adapted physical education equipment, and sensory items as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is discussion items.
We bring to you tonight, I believe Mr. Flannemeyer is here as well, and if you have questions specifically regarding this process, um, but the request to move forward with the Amplify Science Program at the junior high. For the past six, maybe seven years, um, the junior high has been using an HMH Science Dimensions Program, which initially was one of the only options when the new science standards came out. Um, and so now they've moved forward. They have, uh, found Amplify. They've been doing some vetting over the last two years and believe that this is an ideal, um, program and way to go through, uh, science for grade six through eight.
Are there any questions for Ms. Brownfield? This is under discussion, so it will be brought back next month for decision. Any questions? No?
Okay.[1705.41]
Thank you. And Smith Cotton Junior High Baseball and Softball Program Proposal, Mr. Middleton? Mr. Foster?
Uh, good evening. Um, we wanted to talk to you guys kind of a little bit about future of junior high athletics, you know, youth sports, uh, kind of going forward in the district. So, um, last year when you guys, um, hired me, Dr. Fraley kind of tasked me with, uh, program evaluation of all of our sports in our district and where we need to go, where we're currently at, and what we need to do to get better. Uh, Mr. Foster and I talk all the time about what we think we need to do to get better. And one of them, every time we come down to it, it comes down to our youth, our junior high. We need to make those programs better. We need to have more opportunities to help grow our own. So, uh, this is what we think is step one, is to add a few more, uh, sports at the junior high level. So we've done a pretty good evaluation of all sports that we offer and activities that we offer, such as, you know, boys and girls golf, for instance. It's not really offered at the junior high level. There would be nobody to compete with. Um, we've looked into certain sports such as soccer. Um, some of our area schools around us do play it. Um, it is a seventh and eighth grade mixed. It is a girls and boys on the same team. Um, and you, we'd be playing schools like Greenridge, Sacred Heart, Lamont, Marshall. Those are kind of the current ones around us. So, you know, right now, we currently feel like soccer would be one that's best suited to stay in the club sports and let them kind of help grow our high school, our high school team. So, um, that's just kind of one example. So the one we kind of boil down to is baseball and softball. We think this is a need in our district. We think this is something that can really help our high school baseball and softball programs out. Um, I think our coaches are very excited if they could kind of get their hands in on this and just kind of get them ready for when they do come to the high school level. So, um, so that's why we kind of put this proposal together, to see what you guys kind of think. Really, I, I, I mean, I hope you had time to kind of look at it and look at, uh, the timeline. They would both be in the spring season. Um, so for instance, like our softball program, um, you know, like Coach Miller right now, she coaches in the fall for our high school team. She would be able to help out at the junior high level in the spring with the junior high team. So, uh, baseball, a little more trickier, you know, since baseball's in the spring. Junior high baseball would also be in the spring. You know, that's kind of the one obstacle we're kind of looking at right now is where would they practice? What time would they practice? How would we get them over here, things like that? So, um, it's, it's becoming more prevalent, uh, baseball and softball at the junior high level. Um, at our conference last week, we met with a lot of different ADs. Uh, it's getting into some bigger schools such as Camden Town and Waynesville now, Lebanon. Um, talking with the Jeff City Schools, I know they're going to look into it, but we'd still be able to play some surrounding schools around us. But the big thing is, is just getting our coaches to work with our kids. That's the big thing right now. So, um, any kind of questions throughout this program proposal right now?
I, I don't have questions as much as I do, I guess, a comment or two. Baseball's not a cheap sport. You know, basketball and soccer and some of the other sports are pretty inexpensive. Baseball, when you got cleats and a glove and a bat and helmet and pants and a belt and we haven't even talked about jerseys and things yet. It, it's not cheap. And so there are a lot of kids out there that, um, even if they have the, the parental support to get them to games, the, the financial element of baseball is not cheap. Some of these bats are quite expensive. And so, anyway, um, that's one element that I think supports this. The second thing I guess I'd share is, for, for those of you who don't know, I, I started a baseball league nineteen years ago here in town. Um, didn't think I'd still be running it nineteen years later. But, uh, currently, in this age group that they're talking about, there are four Sedalia teams in the league. There are ten in that division. And so the Warrensburg, Clinton, Nob, Warsaw, Boonville, Marshall, that's who, that's who has come to this league for nineteen years. And so there is a lot of reasons to have competitive traveling sports, but there's a lot of supportive reasons to have junior high sports as well. And I do think they can blend. Um, I personally just hold the schedule back on those teams that participate in junior high sports. I don't start them till after they're done with the junior high program, so early May. And so it's not going to limit one or the other. But there's currently ten that come to Sedalia, and that's pretty much been a normal number for about nineteen years that use Centennial Park. The league actually starts tomorrow night, and it goes for about nine weeks. Uh, so that's one reason. There's also four Sedalia teams in the U-12 Division, and there's currently five teams in the U-10 Division. So baseball is a sport that in our community continues to grow. This year's the second most teams I've had in nineteen years of running the league. So I do think the sport is growing locally. Uh, I do think it's going to continue to expand throughout Sedalia, and I think you're going to have more teams to play uh, than may be expected here soon. And so, uh, for those kids that maybe cannot afford the economic side of it, I think this is a great way to get them started. And then if they love it, enjoy it, maybe somebody will help sponsor them and keep them going into the competitive seasons. So I think it's a great idea, and I, I would certainly support it and, and I'd love to see it.
Any other comments or questions?
I actually really appreciated the, the budget estimate in the packet because I would have had no idea how to ballpark these figures, and that's something that's pretty important. I, I question its accuracy because I think there's some more costs that go into it that probably the school doesn't provide, but is more on the parents. But I appreciate that it's an estimate. Yeah, no, I'm all for it. I, I probably directed more at Mr. Foster with all the brass up there, but do you, has there been an effort to understand how implementing more of these programs at the junior high level might help with the discipline issues? I, I would assume it would, given them an outlet.
Outlet and accountability, grades. We have that zero F policy that has been very successful junior high-wise. We've gotten a lot of kids' attention, which has been really good when they have to sit, when they're academically suspended for a grade. They get their grades up miraculously.
Good.
So it's actually been a positive side. I don't see any negatives about adding. We want our kids doing something, whether it's sports, whether it's clubs. I'm all about expansion. So for me, that's a no-brainer. I mean, I would love to find more, especially the soccer realm on, when we talked about the soccer one. The COED is my issue. We have a lot of girls that play soccer. We got a lot of boys that play soccer, and I would hate to cut them, to try to put one team together just to play. So I, until that kind of changes, you know, that's where we're at on that. But softball, we need to grow our softball program, need to grow our girls playing more. With that, we have coaches, I have people that want these jobs, that they will not be, this will not be difficult to fill. And there will be some excitement in the spring. All we have is track. Right now, we have a hundred and fifteen kids running track. And it's quite a challenge getting them to point A to B, so we have so many kids. But that's a good challenge, in my opinion. This will give us some, some kids another opportunity because they want to do things. So the more, the merrier, in my opinion.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? We'll see this back next month for approval. Great. All right, thank you. And the final part of our agenda is information. Dr. Fraley, the building quarterly reports?
Yes, you have the link in your packet to the, uh, since we went electronic with those board reports, I'm hopefully, you've had an opportunity to, uh, look at that and see the growth that takes place over the course of the year in all of our, all of our buildings. And if anyone might have any questions at this point in time for some of the principals out there, this would be the time to ask.
Anybody? Okay. We will move on to the attendance reports. Dr. Fraley?
Yep, uh, per usual. Look at our ninety-niney attendance, eighty-six point four-four, down just a, a wee bit from our February number. Uh, in the spring, we usually see a little bit of a drop off, uh, unfortunately. But hopefully, we'll keep them here as much as possible. And then the ADA report, ADA report, I'm sorry, follows that. And that's currently pre-K through twelve at ninety-three point four-one percent. And K-12 is ninety-three point six-zero percent. And that's for the month of March.
Any questions? No? Okay. I will ask for a motion to adjourn to closed executive session.
Move to adjourn the regular session meeting and notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sedalia School District Two Hundred, having duly voted to close its meeting as authorized by Section six-ten dot zero-two-one, RSMO subsection one, legal actions, three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting, thirteen personnel records, fourteen records which are protected, eighteen public safety or law enforcement, and nineteen security system and structural plans. By law of the Missouri statutes, we'll conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at Smith Cotton High School.
And do I have a second?
Second.
And the roll call vote?
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kimpton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader votes aye.
Thank you. Have a great week.